Welcome to the Council, to the Council meeting. March 28th, March 17th. State of the House, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for troops and active duty? Thank you. And, uh, Conflutus himself, please start, Mr. Trump, right?
Alan Dapo.
Richard Bieseckel.
Henry Mark.
Eric Carlson.
Mary Correa.
Calvin Brown.
Tell clerk, Teresa.
American Carcay, two.
The legal minutes of regular city council meeting on February 10th, 2015.
Motion for motion. Second. Motion made, second, discussion. Carrying now, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item number three. We have Michael Dudko, please.
Michael J. Dudko, one sixteen Lewis Road. Before I begin, uh, I was surprised, uh, I want to speak on a specific issue, number seventeen, and I signed up and I requested that I would like to speak when the issue came up. This was done even five years ago, and I was very surprised that it is not done, this is not the policy anymore. I believe through democratic discussion, you should allow the public, if an item is to be discussed thoroughly and with all the active participants, you should be allowed to speak on that issue when it comes up. I, I, the city probably allows people, your, your functionaries to speak at that point, and it'll take advantage of this. I'm just very shocked, maybe in the future I'll, I'll talk about this. This new policy is not, is not a good policy at all. Forces the public to speak at the beginning and not alongside the issue. Okay. Does the city attorney want to say something? I, I thought I heard something from the city attorney. I don't know if, as far as you know, it's legal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now my dressing.
We're not stopping you from speaking. You, you have your option to come and speak.
See, I, I don't want to waste my time. I don't know how many speakers are signed up tonight, only two, only two, you know? I don't really want to, I, I have a certain amount of time. We could, we discuss this in, in a future, I'll, I'll come and discuss, but I'm very shocked at this new policy. Okay, item seventeen is what I want to address, what I want to address. It's a resolution regarding economic development grant for $140,000, which includes $8,000 for job creation to GMN, GMN USA LP for purposes of designing and constructing a manufacturing facility of approximately 28,000 square feet at 181 Business Park Drive. Now, uh, this is, this piece of property and this, I have nothing against this, this company coming in. Uh, GMN, what I know about them, they're a German originating company, and I have a great respect for German business efficiency and all, and, uh, but I have nothing against that, that firm. But this money is going, coming on the backs of how eminent domain has been practiced in this city. The property, again, as I see this as, as a sort of, a corporate welfare, as the kickback to, to businesses when they obtain, end up obtaining eminent domain property that, that was obtained, obtained at a very low price by, by procedures and, uh, the legal hired guns of the city. I, I happen to know, okay, that the land went worth $58,000 an acre. This 140, they, they have approximately five, uh, that, so they're getting roughly, in my viewpoint, they're getting back something like $26,000. So that, so they're ending up with the property at about $32,000 an acre. And, and I'm, I'm looking at that, that, this is the payoff with corporate welfare, with corporate welfare, in eminent domain as it was practiced in this city. You're delivering, you end up delivering to the third party the lowest possible price. That's why the city wants to use tough tactics when using eminent domain. They want to get the lowest price possible. You hire the, the appraisers that in the past have always given you the, the lowest amount of money, uh, valued on a piece of property, and then the person who's a victim, uh, he hires the appraiser, more than likely, it's, the judge's judge halfway. The, the person who's a victim automatically loses. This is the payoff after, after eminent domain is practiced. This grant money that, that's given to the firm. I happen to know next, just adjacent, the, the land was worth $212,000 an acre. Two hundred twelve. And, and this is corporate welfare where, where the third party.
Thank you, Mr. Dudko.
Ends up with a, with a, a deal. A deal. Okay. Maybe in the future.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Sean Rose?
Good evening, Sean Rose, 53 Lane Castor Road. Back in 440 B.C., parables from the first democracy ever created once said that although only a few may originate a policy, we were all able to judge it. So on, on that note, I'd like to commend Chairman Beetz for upholding section forty-nine of our city charter, which allows the public to speak at any border commission meeting. And tonight, I would like to talk about a few things, but basically I want to cut right to the survey because, uh, basically I was accused of cherry picking information, and it's, it's very amusing, it's ironic, in fact, I got accused of that. Because if you go through the survey and you look at what people strongly agree, and I'm talking about open-ended questions, not, um, how strongly do you agree on this, or how strongly I omitted that stuff. So if you look at everything over twenty percent, the only questions that you're going to get answers for are the following. Are you a Bristol resident? Yes, a hundred percent. Twenty years or older? A hundred percent. Have you lived in Bristol for how long? More than twenty years is fifty-six percent. What was the main reason for moving to Bristol? Location, close to family or close to highways? Forty-nine percent. Or you were born here? Thirty-two percent. Do you see yourself living in Bristol? Yes. Seventy-one percent. No, twenty-four point eight percent. There's my favorite. What do you think the city should do to improve the quality of life in Bristol? Number one answer? Twenty-seven percent. I don't know, or I refuse to answer that question. I thought it was going to be some different thing. I really don't like the chatter of this stuff. Um, what would you like the city to do to improve downtown Bristol? Thirty-one percent. More business, shopping, and entertainment. Rentshants came in at 3.7 percent, Depot Square at 1.2 percent. Are you considering moving to a different home within the next five years? Forty percent. Yes? Fifty-three percent, no. Tell me what you think your next housing choice will be. Move to a single-family home? Thirty point two percent. Move to a smaller single-family home? Twenty-three point eight percent. Are there any other issues related to current or future development in Bristol you feel the city should look at? Number one answer? Don't know or refuse, thirty-seven percent. Number two? No. Pardon me. Twenty point eight percent said no. The only depot square was point five percent. How would you rate the overall condition of the city maintained relative to Bristol? That got, that got favorable. Of course, that was before the winter, but there's no in here as well, so, but I thought I mentioned that because it's up there. Letter grade for the city, school system, forty-four percent. Overall quality of life is good, seventy-six percent. Don't see any reason making drastic, drastic changes there. Ninety-seven percent of respondents were head of households. Sixty-five percent of respondents don't have any children under the age of eighteen living at home. Employment status, only thirty-nine point five percent of respondents were working full-time. Twenty-eight point four percent were retired. Now, if I was a cherry picker, I would say, we need more affordable housing in Bristol because that must be the reason why everyone's moving out of Bristol. It's not the way I look at it, and most people wouldn't. Because if you look at the top answers and you put them all together, you're going to find that more people were concerned about crime and taxes than they were about downtown revitalization. But if you want to ask the question, what's the number one answer for the most important issue in Bristol, number one was downtown development. Would anyone like to ask if that question means the same thing to me as it does the people that made the conclusion on this? Because it's the most important issue to me, but it doesn't mean we need to spend money on it. Big difference between what do you want the city to do and what's the most important issue, I think. That's my opinion, if I'm entitled to that. Okay? Basically, there's another, there's, there's quite a bit of misconceptions going on, but I'm just going to cut to it. I've been accused of demagoguery and fear of migraine. The federal debt has doubled since 2007 to $18 trillion. The state debt has increased to $42 billion. The nation's money supply has increased by more than sixty-five percent, leading to a higher cost of living. There's been a thirty percent increase in food stamps in the state of Connecticut since 2010. And according to, uh, something that was brought up last night, Bristol averaged one foreclosure per day in, in the last quarter of last year. So, um, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, if, if you're going to tell me that the economy's in recovery and it's a good idea to invest money that taxpayers don't have, I'm going to say, you're, I think you're wrong in sort of the residents of Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Just so you know, you've used two minutes for next month.
Okay. One of these days I'll be sick, and then, then I'll work up.
I don't feel good. Start with my far right.
I have two. This weekend, we have two events that benefit the community. The first one is fundraiser breakfast at American Legion II for the Memorial Military Museum. That's commemorating a bunch of very interesting military issues over the course of 2015. That's from eight to eleven. And in the afternoon, the Rotary Club's having their second annual pizza challenge. So, um, for those of you who don't like to cook, Sunday's a great day. And I just also want to just make another pitch that the Bristol Blues are still looking for host families, so anybody who might know of anybody who has an extra bedroom for June, July, and the first half of August, we'd be interested in talking to them. It's a great experience, very enriching for kids, if you have kids who do play sports, great bonding experience, and obviously great entertainment all summer for the family. Thank you.
Yes. Since next Tuesday, the city council won't be around at the reunion or Chalk Ruska or Dudko. You might want to consider going to see the Bristol Brass and Wonder Ensembles concert on Tuesday, March 17th, 7:00 p.m. in Prospect Methodist Church, called The Sounds of Spring. I believe it's a free will offering.
Hold to it.
I have a few things. I think we have survived winter. I don't know if I'm premature, I hope I'm not chipping anything, but however.
It wins, right?
Sorry, I thought that was me. Seven hundred blood drives were canceled last month across the country due to the weather. Uh, the Red Cross is trying to get back on track. One special blood drive is taking place on Tuesday, March 31st, from 1:00 to 6:30 at the Hillside Community Church, 435 Broad Street. This drive is special because it has been set up to, um, in honor of premature twins who were born last fall at the Hospital of Central Connecticut. Cameron and Olivia Plourd are the twin daughters of Bristol firefighters Brian and Adrian Plourd. The event is sponsored by the Bristol Firefighters Local 773 and the Hospital of Central Connecticut. You can go on the Hospital of Central Connecticut's website for more information. In other health news, Public Works employee Matt Rigetti had another checkup yesterday, and both he and his wife Jen, his liver donor, are doing well and recuperating at home, so we're very thankful for that. Spring is almost here, again, despite what it sometimes looks like outside, and with the arrival of spring comes many annual community events, including the OM Show on April 17th and 18th, the Bob Watson Scholarship Dinner on April 23rd, the Forestville Village Duck Race on May 3rd, followed by the second annual Pine Lake Fishing Derby on May 9th, just to name a few. I have tickets to both the Watson Dinner and the Duck Race if anyone's interested. And lastly, don't forget to use your Taste of Bristol cards throughout the month of March.
Just a couple of quick announcements, highlighting some interesting, some good things happening for young people around town in the next couple of months. The annual Academic Bowl will be held on Saturday, March 28th at noon at Lewis Mills High School in Burlington, 26th Lions Road, Burlington. Uh, the Academic Bowl, for those of you who don't know, is a, an academic-oriented competition for students from Bristol Eastern, Bristol Central, St. Paul, Lewis Mills, and... Does Terryville have high school? Is Terryville? Terry, okay, there you go, Terryville High School. Um, and when I was in high school, I participated in it, and it's a, it's a great time if you're somebody that's interested in hearing about what young people think about public policy issues, if you like trivia, if you like poetry, if you like music, it's a great time, and it's, it's a cool event to see young people engage in all those things and compete against one another. It's a lot of fun. So that's Saturday, March 28th, at noon at Lewis Mills High School. Also, from Youth Services, the Bristol Youth Commission is seeking nominations of youth of all ages who in the last year have volunteered to make a meaningful contribution at their school, in the community, or at a nonprofit organization like maybe a nursing home. A tad, uh, excuse me. All nominations must be submitted to Youth Services by Wednesday, March 25th at 4:30 p.m., so that's come out. If you know anybody that might be a good candidate, you can call Bristol Youth Services and figure out how to submit that student for an award. And that's it for me. Oh, and those awards will be presented at the May City Council meeting, if you're all interested in coming back then. And that's it for me, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Nine a.m., March 21st is the Seamarack Run and Walk, Chippin's Home Middle School. It's always a fun time. I'd also like to say we have Ken Hicks, who's our nutmeg, one of our nutmeg guys, been with the city here for, for eleven years, doing our show. He's moving on, this is to be his last show, so I want to thank you, Ken, for all you've done for us. You've always been a great guy. Thank you. And then, one more thing. This past, uh, this past Tuesday, we, with the West End, with the West End realignment, that is moving forward, uh, we met this past Tuesday with the DOT, and the homeowners who are going to be affected of this, we had a private meeting with them to explain what was happening, um, and I'm just going to be a fresh release that was just sent out tonight. The Connecticut Department of Transportation and the City of Bristol will conduct a public informational meeting to discuss proposed improvements to the intersection of Connecticut Route, of CT Route 29 West Street and CT Route 72 Park Street and School Street to address vehicle pedestrian safety concerns and improved traffic operations. The informational meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 31st at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers of the city Bristol Hall. So this is open to the public. This is something that this administration has been pushing very hard. Uh, this, this needs to be done in that, in that area. It's a very dangerous area, there's quite a bit of accidents every year. So, we had a very good meeting with the DOT, the homeowners, it was very receptive, um, and it's, it's moving ahead, and I want to thank our Public Works Director and his staff for all they've done to, to keep this thing moving. So, um, again, March 31st, 7:00 p.m. That's all I have. Item number five.
The consent calendar, and there are six items. Item five A is to place on file the hiring report for February 2015. Five B is the approval of tax refunds dated March 3rd, 2015. Five C is to place on file the recommendation from the Board of Fire Commissioners regarding approval to discontinue a portion of Pine Street. Item five D is to place on file the recommendation from the Board of Fire Commissioners regarding approval to discontinue a portion of Pine Street between Evergreen and Sycamore Streets. Item five E is the ordinance committee to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, section 21 dash 25 pertaining to enforcement of fines and penalties for snow removal, to waive the reading of the amendments and schedule a public hearing for March 18th, 2015. And item five F is the ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, section 21 dash 21 dot 10, shopping cards.
Motion for approval? Motion, second, action, main, second, discussion. Carrying now, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And number six, committee reports, starting by far left.
Yes, Your Honor. Couple of quick ones from the library. Three more Sundays left at the main library. Uh, that will be open for Sunday hours from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The library's been very busy on Sundays with as many as 315 patrons coming on one day. So that goes to highlight the valuable service that the library providing the community by being open on Sundays. But only a couple more left. Also, free AARP tax services for seniors and low income continues through Tuesday, April 14th, from an 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the lower level of the main library. So that's through Tuesday, April 14th, from 11:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. on the lower level of the main library. I wanted to make sure everybody was reminded about that, and that's it for me, Your Honor.
Thank you.
None for me.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say that the, um, we've got a couple of bridges in town that are going to get replaced. Put together a committee to select the engineers for the project, and Lewis Mills is going to be going into the development phase. I just wondered if Roger would sort of come up and explain the process just a little bit about what's going on, because the bridges are being replaced, there's Louisiana Avenue, which is pretty much a straightforward replacement. We also have to replace the bridge on Memorial Boulevard. That's going to be more expensive than this one, people are going to be more interested in finding out about art design.
Yes, thank you. There are actually two projects, as you said. Louisiana Avenue is under the federal state bridge replacement program, meaning that we get eighty percent of the funds coming from outside of the city government, but it is a replacement project. That one, uh, actually has a process driven by the program whereby we receive qualifications from firms, and then once we establish the qualifications, we determine which firm is the most suitable for it, and then we send that off for approval for that recommendation. Then we begin scope development, and we, once we finalize that scope, we send it off for approval. Once we have the scope approved, we then send it off for fee scheduling, ask for that approval. So it's a very long and arduous process for addressing the replacement of the Louisiana Avenue Bridge, but it'll be well worth it when everything is done. Again, there's Memorial Boulevard Bridge, which is a separate structure. Uh, that falls under a different program that goes to the state of Connecticut DOT. That one has roughly, I believe it's a fifty percent, roughly a fifty percent city match for the work under that project. It doesn't have the same strict guidelines in terms of the process, in terms of reviewing qualifications, asking for approval, going through the continual steps of approval. In the interest of consistency in reviewing the firms, the committee elected to follow a similar methodology for both processes, and we did select two different firms for that work. There's a firm, BL Companies, which we intend to pursue for Louisiana Avenue and Wengel, McDonald, and Castello for the Memorial Boulevard Bridge. So we're still in the process of discussing scope with those firms to try and move forward. But we'll tell you one other thing, that one of the efforts that we tried to accomplish with this, there are other structures on our bridges that we will be experiencing over the next couple of years. There is a large list of structures that we need to address. Engineering Department asked if we could also incorporate into the scope the ability to establish an on-call services contract, so that then we can begin the actual continual inspection of the bridges to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our bridges are up to code and compliance.
Thank you. Anything else?
Real Estate Committee. Uh, I have a motion from the Real Estate Committee. It be approved that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute an exclusive right to sell listing contract, MLS group listing agreement. The sale of property at 101 George Street has shown on obsessive map, lot, map 31, lot 120, with Keller Williams Realty, with a service fee of five percent agreed upon the sale price. I ask for a second.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
Yes, I just have one item. Per discussions that we've had before, that property has this type of code, this type of thing, so the communication between our committees is important when it comes to the point that we should really try to recoup what we've already claimed that property for.
We're certainly trying to get as much, as much as we can recouped on it. Anything else? Any other discussion?
Is that a listing agreement, because there's a price on the...
I don't believe the price has been agreed upon yet. We have, um, that project. We would not make that public knowledge.
I apologize. Typically, what we've been doing is going out through the normal RFP process to try and solicit interest in properties in the interest of trying to capture as much value as possible. That's why we've tried to go back to the methodology for using a Realtor, so we're trying to capture actual true market value for the property, and that's why we've chosen to go this route for this particular property. We're aware of that there are substantial past issues with the property, and that's one of the reasons we've tried to go this route, just to make sure we maximize our return.
Anything else? Thank you. The discussion's right now on favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Yes, I got a few things. Ed, Mike, can I ask Ed to say a few things about the field name? Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed, for coming. I know you're not feeling very well, but toughing it out for me.
Oh, Paige Park, we were talking about the synthetic. As a committee, we, we've been meeting for the last six, seven months, and we're, we're moving forward with Paige Park. We cleared a hurdle with Bristol Eastern High School to allow us to do some overflow parking over there. So presently now, we're putting together numbers, and then we'll, hopefully the next month, we'll come here and we'll present it to you in terms of what we're looking forward to accomplish there. Right now, I don't know what the numbers are, but I think we're probably looking at, trying to come up with something that's going to be phased in, so give a little bit of idea of what we're trying to do.
I just, I know last year, when we first, when it was first presented from the park, Ed was at the 10-year capital, um, committee. That's not your intention, doing that this year, because I know we're meeting next week.
I still have it listed on...
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
I still have it listed on the 10-year capital as a, as a smaller item. I don't have the numbers to go forward, but it, but it is on there for, for discussion, and hopefully we can keep that dialogue going.
I'm sure we'll be discussing it tomorrow. Thanks, Ed. Thank you.
Don't come in my office if you're sick.
Uh, the marketing committee, just to give you a little update on that, the marketing committee has, as you all know, has created and launched and refined the logo, and, uh, the, the launch actually took place at the home show, and the, the feedback has been very, very positive. They told, they sold some merchandise, quite a bit from what I hear, and I don't know if you all saw some coasters, but the, the All Heart logo was on one side, and on the other side was some of the local merchants, such as Firefly, Double Tree, I believe, and, uh, Barle, Barle Van. The brand is, has been getting used, I think everybody's starting to see it, and some of the mailers, one of which was the Energize Connecticut. The city has been using it on its letterhead, business cards. From what I understand, the Public Works is, has also been testing a bumper magnet as well. And what I really like about what's taken place is, is that we started it in All Heart Awards, and Nucci's was the first recipient of that for their 40-year anniversary, and those that have received it since then, I know are very, very excited about receiving that All Heart Award, so. And lastly, there is a web page, a website that's being developed, and we hope to have that launched by early summer. And, oh, one other thing is that there is a, great, there's a list that's being worked on right now of all the city events, and I saw it for the first time today, and I'll bet you there's at least 20 events that's already scheduled for the city of Bristol, and as... And as we go to move forward, we will be adding to that list as well.
Councilman Martin, how do you get listed on that calendar? What's the mechanism for that?
I think simply by contacting the chamber.
Through their online calendar that they've had, or is it something separate for the marketing team?
I don't know, other than contact the chamber and they'll direct you.
Thank you.
I do have the salary committee. I have a couple of motions, actually. The salary committee recommends to the city, a motion to, the salary committee recommends to the city of Bristol to approve a position of skilled crafting local 1338, code 7, at $20.76 an hour, to $23.23 an hour in the WPC Division of Public Works, and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I have one other item, something that's been pending for way too long, and I'd like to bring the motion to bring the non-bargaining salaries and benefits to the table.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 1.9 salary increase and 2% cost sharing increase retroactive July 1st, 2014, and an increase of $250 on each salary step followed by 1.9% salary increase and a 1.5 cost sharing increase effective July 1st, 2015, for full-time non-bargaining, and to apply such salary increase to the part-time mayor's administrative fate. Also, to approve healthcare plan design changes, including wellness components, effective April 1st, 2015, and to reduce the maximum annual sick leave credit from 25 days to 18 days for full-time non-bargaining employees.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no. Motion passes. Item number, any other committee reports?
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Compliment. Compliment?
Yes, I have two. I'm going to start with code enforcement. We had a busy first quarter. And a couple of the data pieces that I like to update you on is a lot of questions about foreclosures, and there have been 46 since January 1st, ranging mostly through District 3 and District 2, although there have been nine in District 1 as well. Out of those, four have already been sold, several do remain vacant, and it's something that we are definitely monitoring. Code activity actually has not waned, even in the winter. We've had dozens of complaints since the last council meeting. And I just want to draw a parallel to some of the comments that we've heard at other committee meetings and budget-related. We've had an enormous amount of increase, I think, in illegal three-family, no egress, basement apartments, illegal three-families. And I think a lot of this is related to the economics of people trying to keep their houses. And we've also had, in the past three or four months, boarding houses, people literally renting out rooms. So from a housing standpoint, there's egress issues, there's fire safety issues, and in some cases, it's also been compounded with boarding. So it's been, it's not been dull, I think I can say. We are doing an increase with legal activity, with liens, and I'd like to compliment Noel Bates, who brings us data every month from Corporation Council to the judgements, which has been a great tracking tool. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, in terms of realtors, we've also had a situation with realtors trying to get the best price and ignoring code citation and abatements. And so in terms of that, I just caution everyone that if you are interested in the properties or one of these addresses that we're dealing with, that you really do your homework. We had a situation on Frederick Street this past week that was really unfortunate in terms of what was happening there, property of interest. The other thing, too, is in terms of the activity and what we're seeing, I just again want to stress the importance of the team aspect of code enforcement and the communication piece, especially in terms of the departments and how they interact together. And two separate items. The first is that we're having our third retirement off of code enforcement since I've been back on the council, and I just want to say congratulations to TJZ Christantos, who attended his last code enforcement meeting last week, and he is going to be missed. And I also want to commend Tom Mosher, who's our code enforcement officer, in addition to Karen Wagner from Health, and Anne Marie Sungren from Community Services, who worked together last week to deal with a gentleman on England Street who is a homeowner, who had some issues, and we were able to pull a lot of resources together for him, including Tom Mosher putting him in his car, bringing him to BCO for fuel assistance, and actually having his taxes done by Tom's accountant in order for him to qualify for the BDA rehabilitation program. Really goes above and beyond, but I think it demonstrates the commitment that a lot of the people who are now into this code enforcement have seen on the results that they can affect. So I think it was just a great example of three departments coming together and really making sure that this homeowner and resident of Bristol got what they needed. So that's code enforcement. If anybody has any questions, I'm going to do a brief handout as a, hopefully, closing report. A couple months ago, we had a lot of people here talking about the community cap issue, and we effectively, I think, have dealt with the issue, with one outstanding piece being the ordinance passing out a report which shows the new community coalition that's working together, the fundraiser they had last month, the money that they raised, the distribution of where it's going to go, and how they're going to work out in the future. None of this involves taxpayer money, but it does involve, again, people working together who have, like, goals and who have resources to share. So that's a report that you can read at your leisure, but I think that that has been successfully resolved. The third report is another handout. Last night, we did have a Memorial Boulevard task force meeting, and we are very close to our final report. What I'm handing out to is the draft of our proposed project phasing. And I won't go through it because it's very well-written and very thorough, but it shows what we're possibly looking at in terms of how to bring this project into the next segment. So that's for your own reading. We're going to try to get on the 10-year capital for discussion purposes, and I think that there's a lot of interest and community support in order for us to have a plan in place for what I think the majority of the community does feel is a significant building. So that's the report from last night. That's where we're going. If you have any questions about any of the phasing, when you have a chance to read it, obviously you can talk to me or any members of our task force, who have just been phenomenal in what they've done to pitch in and taken up pieces of getting this done. We're still working on a management piece for the nonprofit, and we're also working with some of the short-term issues that need to be done for the events. The events are important because they showcase the building and especially the potential, but even since we did it in November, the amount of calls from people who are interested in renting space, both on the building side as well as being tenants and occupants of the theater, has doubled. We actually just received a letter of intent yesterday from a very large museum nonprofit that wants to relocate here, and the small businesses, too, are interested as well. So that being said, we have a small event scheduled for the spring. It starts in April. The first one is April 11th, which is a Saturday night, and we're approaching a different demographic with this one. It's a Queen tribute band, which will be led by Bristol native Joe Arshobo. And this has already been worked out within the Corporation Council's office, so tonight, out of committee, I'd like to bring forward the contract with King's Rocks for approval. Like I said, it's already been approved and vetted, but because of the short timeframe, I have to bring it out through the committee process.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Let me just ask Corp Counsel, have you reviewed this in your own set? Okay. Counselor, can you just explain what the contract is? Because usually, we get handed hands to read.
It's somewhere. It's just, it shows their responsibilities and our responsibilities, and how we're breaking out the profit, and then obviously our mutual liability indemnification and insurance pieces as well, between us and the entertainment group that's bringing in the band. And they're called King's Rock Incorporated.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We also have another event on Sunday afternoon, April 19th, with Yale, with the booth. They have also sent a contract to the city of Bristol, and tonight, I'm only asking for it to be referred to the Corporation Council's office for review.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And we're going to have to go in reverse for a minute because I wrote a code item underneath MBS. I have two other items, and they were the ones that I sent everybody on Monday, are property tax freeze assessment applications that have been forwarded by the code enforcement committee. I sent all of you the before and after pictures. I wrote it under the wrong column, I apologize. But we do need votes to approve those applications. The first one is 73 Meadow Street, which is to the rear of City Hall right now, and the second one is 193 Center Street. And those have been vetted through code enforcement and just need to be approved to be entered into the program.
Do you need two motions?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the tax freeze for the Meadow Street property.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion that we accept the tax payment for the second property, which I can't remember what street it is.
193 Center Street. Center Street.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I have no committee reports. Unfinished business, starting by far left.
None.
None?
None.
None?
None.
None. Okay. New business, starting by far left.
But you're getting out easily.
None.
Oh, wait, we have one. All right, go ahead.
I want to bring up the West End. 2011, we had the West End Study completed, and there's a lot of great information, recommendations that came from that study. And one of the recommendations was the establishment of the neighborhood group, which today we have the West End Association. And I really like to applaud the West End Association for organizing and for really, I guess, demonstrating their enthusiasm and willingness to work to improve their own neighborhood. So the report went on to say that implementing the suggestions and the recommendations from the West End Study would require, and quote, "is an unwavering commitment of time, attention, effort, and resources." And with, I think everybody on this council, I think we all have the best interest of the West End at heart, and we want to continue with what the study, with the work, the study with commitment to time, attention, effort, and resources. The DOT, as the mayor has informed us earlier this evening, that the West End realignment is underway, that design work is in motion, and the neighborhood, or those that have a stake in that area, have been notified. But I'd like, want to take another part of that plan, the study, and I want to make a motion to have the city planner to work with the DOT in its design and draft of a pedestrian slash bicycle walkway, a trail, so to speak, that would connect Rockwell Park to downtown Bristol, to start with. And if we're aggressive, and I think if we start with a vision, I think we can take it down to the boulevard. I think we can take it up Federal Hill. And if we're really ambitious, I think we can take it up to the Hoppers and maybe circle back around and eventually tie it in some way back to Rockwell Park. So with that said, that's my motion.
Wait a second. Motion made seconded, discussion.
Your honor, just for clarification to Councilman Martin, is this motion to ask the planner to look into how to do this? Is that correct, my understanding correct?
Actually, Councilman, I would like him to get, sit down, and with the resources that he has and that he can use, is to start putting a plan together. Gee, how can we connect this? The West End Study talks about using assets, and one of which they identified as the aquatic river. So we know that part of the DOT plan is to take down some of the houses, the property along that river. Why not use this as an opportunity to, gee, what can we create along the aquatic river, a pipe path, to get down from downtown down to Rockwell Park? So to answer your question specifically, I can make a plan.
Okay. So if he's making a plan, does that go to planning commission then, or does it come back to us after the plan is done? How does that process?
I think usually it'll go through his. Be funny to watch Alan sort of assess himself on it, you know, or scrutinize his own plan. So I believe that he would have to go through the planning commission for us.
Okay. All right. Just curious, want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Business? Counselor?
Well, I think that we're probably all monitoring the state budget issues, and I just want to bring to everyone's attention the fact that through the Budget Bill 949, there is a proposal to eliminate and sweep all the revenue attached to the Community Investment Act out of the budget for the next two fiscal years and bring it into the general fund, which would be, I think, roughly $56 million. This is one of those issues that actually counterbalances all the unfunded mandates because the Community Investment Act is what funds the historic preservation grants, all of the agricultural, the farmland, open space, and so now they're removing that as a revenue source as well as opportunities for municipalities. I know that the cuts to human services are devastating. I know that it's a difficult budget, and it's a difficult budget year, but I think that it would probably behoove us as a governing council to really start monitoring how some of these are going to affect us from a revenue standpoint as well as the opportunity cost standpoint, because that's going to be something that many organizations in town will lose out on. Currently, it's $40 is collected on every real estate transaction and put into this pool, and they're proposing that that will go away.
Anything else?
Thank you. And I have one thing. The Regional Performance Incentive Program, and the proposed resolution authorizes Nugget Valley Regional Council of Governments to apply for grant to the state of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management to upgrade the geographic information system for member municipalities. And I'll ask for a motion to be read.
Yes, sir. Resolution endorsed and authorization. We hereby resolve that the city of Bristol endorse the Regional Performance Incentive Program pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 4-124S, as follows. Number one, NVCOG, Nugget Valley Council of Governments, Regional GIS Data Development and GIS Website Enhancement. Number two, Senior Citizen Property Tax Loan Program Feasibility Study. Number three, statewide personal photography and LIDAR data, I don't know what that means, proposed to be submitted by CARCOG. We hereby resolve that the mayor, Kenneth Beattaw, and the acting mayor be authorized to act on this endorsement by the signing of all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions related to this proposal to enter into the binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management accordance with the terms of the RPI grant program.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, resolution starting by far left.
Yes.
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 Chair of OTS, motion passes.
Item number nine.
It's resignations, and there are no reservations, Rob.
Item number 10. Appointments. So appointments, Commission on Aging, to reappoint John Harton, three-year term, to 3/18. To reappoint Helen Lobachowski, three-year term, to 3/18.
Some move? Second. Motion made seconded, discussion.
Ellen Lobachowski, I don't know if she's still around. She's, have you talked to her?
She sent me a letter.
Oh, she did? Okay.
She wanted me reappointed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
City Cemetery Commission, to reappoint Tom LaFleur, three-year term, 3/18.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Bristol Downtown
Motion passes. Bristol Downtown Development Corporation, to appoint Joseph Gennaro.
Garino.
Thank you. Garino, to replace Gardner Wright, resigned, unexpired term to 4/16.
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption, to appoint Frank Stosky to replace Ricky Buford as six citizen-at-large. To appoint Sean Dunn to replace Frank Stosky as Board of Public Works member. So move?
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Your Honor, just quickly, is it, am I correct in understanding that Commissioner Buford resigned, right? That's correct. Yep. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Board of Ethics, are these voted out?
Actually, no. Each person gets their own appointment. You designate the person, and they get the.
So mayor, myself, Mayor Kenneth Beattie Kane, to designate, to reappoint Thomas Masrally, three-year term, to 3/18. Councilmember Carlson, to reappoint Timothy Kraus, three-year term, to 3/18. Councilmember Martin, to reappoint Kenneth Zutarski, three-year term, to 3/18. Councilwoman Fortier, to appoint Attorney Roger Chason.
Chase.
Jason III, to replace Attorney Bernard Gravowski, three-year term, to 3/18.
I do think he's Roger Chase on the second, but I'm not positive.
We'll just clarify, we'll clarify that before we, but thank you. Does that matter?
He might even be a junior. Definitely, I don't think he's Mr.
Or the attorney is, that's who we're putting.
He comes in all the time, so if you want to just leave it as Roger Chase on, we'll make sure that the right person.
Okay. Palm Lake Area Study Committee, to replace Arthur, oh, sorry. Bristol Property Renewal Corporation, to reappoint Alan Coslaw, one-year term, to 3/16. To reappoint Jennifer Arnold-Domwicks, I can never say that, one-year term, to 3/16. To reappoint Caitlin Humboldt, one-year term, to 3, to 3/16. To reappoint David White, one-year term, to 3/16. To reappoint Peter Matthews, Jr., one-year term, to 3/16. Youth Commissioner, to reappoint Dante Taganello, under 21 age rep, three-year term, to 3/18. And to reappoint Kayla Barado, under 21 age rep, three-year term, 3/18. Can I have a motion on those, please?
So move?
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I don't think we voted on the Bristol property divestment.
You didn't, but I kind of took it that you were doing all of them together. I suppose you can.
And then I have one more. This is the startup Bristol Mayor's Task Force, and Justin, before I do this, can you just come up and give us a little rundown of what this, what this is? Then I'll turn around to these sheriff members are going to be, please.
Good evening, everyone. Startup Bristol is the new project that we're working on in the BDA, in the mayor's office. It's basically going to be a business plan competition to encourage startup companies to settle in Bristol. This is the type of competition that's done elsewhere in the country. It's done at places like Connecticut Innovations and universities. It's not often that you find a municipality that's good, that will do one. It's unique for us because obviously, we want to help fund startups and innovative companies, but we want to fund Bristol companies. So if they're located outside of the city, this will be an incentive for hopefully these companies to move here, and if they're already located here in Bristol, it's an incentive for companies to expand or grow. This task force really is the most important, I think, part of the project, and we've already started talking, and I think their, their main charge will be to review, help coordinate the process of review and ultimately select the winners, if you will, but beyond that, there's going to be opportunity for mentoring from these folks to not only the companies that are funded, but companies that maybe aren't funded, but we still see great promise in, for Bristol.
Thank you. And I have to give Justin credit. He came to my office with this idea, and I thought it was a great idea. You know, and this just shows the commitment of this administration, thinking outside the box, not only working to bring established companies to Bristol and help the ones that are here grow, but also work with new companies and help them grow. Remember, ESPN started out as a small company. Microsoft started out of their garage, I believe, so nothing is out of the realm, and we're aggressively looking to increase our tax base, whether it be a small company or the largest company that we possibly bring into Bristol. So the following members are who are going to be on this, this task force, and I'm going to read a little bit about who the person is. Michael Zedman. Michael is Bristol resident who launched Science Solutions, a bio consulting company. Michael offers experience as an entrepreneur, experience in the field of biotechnology, biological, and medical science. Adam Van Gooten. Adam is Bristol resident and a lifelong entrepreneur. His most recent venture is founding of Onyx Spear Company, a distillery producing Onyx Moonshine, their first premium American moonshine, as well as Connecticut's first whiskey. Eric St. Pierre. Eric is a Bristol resident and co-founder of Parts Tech, an innovative online platform that helps mechanics save time and money by simplifying auto parts ordering process. Kathy Faber. Kathy brings over 28 years of small business ownership and a retail experience as the owner of high-end clothing company Kathy Faber Designs. Kathy is known throughout the Northeast and is a top former wear designer. Eric Warshell. Eric is owner of Fax Axle, located on Broad Street in Bristol. After traveling the country in his race car mechanic at the age of 19, Eric settled in Bristol to form Fax Axle, an innovative manufacturer of race car axles. Sean Taylor. Sean is co-founder of Farouk, a firm that provides enterprise-grade software and innovative technology solutions to some of the world's largest companies and institutions. The task force will also receive guidance from Connecticut Innovations, the state's leading source of financing and support for Connecticut startups. So as you can see, we have some pretty impressive people on this board, and I'm excited, and Justin, this great job, you know, as a department head, you've really taken that department to a whole other level. A great job.
Resolution regarding approval to file JAG 2015 Violent Crime Prevention Grant for $30,000 with Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for wages and salaries, wage assistance, five for community policing and authorization to execute. There is a role call, there is a resolution and a role call.
So we're here to read?
All ready. Be hereby resolved by the City Council, the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application for the JAG 2015 Violent Crime Prevention Grant funded under the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for $30,000 is hereby approved, and the mayor, Kenneth Beattie Kane, or acting mayor, and the chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents related to this application funding grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash award slash grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. Role call starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair of OTS, yes, and motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding approval to file fiscal year 2015 Distracted Driving High Visibility Enforcement Grant, $39,400 with Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety for approved overtime expenses and authorization to execute, and there is a resolution to read?
I can read that, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation fiscal year 2015 Distracted Driving High Visibility Enforcement Grant is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth Beattie Kane, or acting mayor, and the chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application slash funding slash grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash award slash grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
I have a second. Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. Role call starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair of OTS, yes, and motion passes. Item number 13.
Resolution regarding approval to file Elderly and Disabled Demand Response of Transportation Grant for $57,275 with the Connecticut Department of Transportation to expand the dialyry program and authorization for Mayor Kenneth Beattie Kane to execute, and there is a resolution to read?
I can read that. Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for $57,275 with a city cash match of $70,160 included in the Bristol Department of Aging's 2015-2016 budget request and projected $1,000 in fair revenue for a total program budget of $128,435 to expand the dialyry program is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth Beattie Kane, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. Role call starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair of OTS, motion passes. Item 14.
Award of Contract 2C15-2, sanitary sewer repair between Placeville Street and Brewster Road to Tobacco and Sun Builders Incorporated for $127,660.50 in authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So move?
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 15.
Award of Contract 2P15-58A to Lorero Engineering Associates Incorporated in accordance with the schedule of hourly rates through March 31, 2018, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Overapproval? Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 16.
Award of Contract 2P15-58B to RC Design Associates Incorporated in accordance with the schedule of hourly rates through March 31, 2018, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Overapproval? Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 17.
Resolution regarding Economic Development Grant for $140,000, which includes $8,000 for job creation to GMN USALP for purposes of designing and constructing a manufacturing facility of approximately 28,000 square feet at 181 Business Park Drive, and there is a resolution to read?
I can read that, Your Honor. Go ahead. Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to provide an economic development grant in the amount of $140,000, which includes $8,000 for job creation to GMN USALP for purposes of designing and constructing a manufacturing facility of approximately 28,000 square feet at 181 Business Park Drive and relocating GMN USALP to said facility, subject to normal provisions. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made second. A discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Role call starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 18. I'm going to refuse myself. This is my son's pediatrician. Get the medical room.
And I'll start to read the item. Resolution regarding Economic Development Grant, $56,640, which includes $3,000 for job creation to Pediatric Care Center LLC for purposes of designing and constructing a medical office building of approximately 4,000 square feet at 1301 Farmington Avenue. And there is a resolution to read?
Somebody care to read?
I'll read. Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to provide an economic development grant in the amount of $56,640, which includes $3,000 for job creation to Pediatric Care Center LLC for the purposes of designing and constructing a medical office building of approximately 4,000 square feet at 1301 Farmington Avenue and relocating the Pediatric Care Center LLC to said facility, subject to normal provisions. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Role call starting my far left.
Well, under discussion, Your Honor.
Under discussion.
I got to be honest, I'm a little embarrassed to admit this, but this happens to have been my pediatrician, too, up until, actually, as it turns out, very recently. And I don't, does that mean that it's a conflict for me, too, do you think?